Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for today, Tuesday, our June 24 Douglas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd love to invite up Jason Van Deavere for our invocation. Welcome.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you this afternoon, Lord, in humility and just seeking your grace. Lord, we come boldly to your throne and we just ask that, Lord, you'd have your continued hand upon our country. Lord, we just thank you for your mercy and for protecting our air crews and, Lord, for delivering the nation of Israel. We pray for their peace and safety as you encourage us and for ours as well. And, Lord, we pray for our leaders. We ask that you continue to give them wisdom, especially here, Lord, our county leaders. We just pray that you be with them, give them discernment and compassion and direction, Lord, that you might continue to take care of your people. Lord, we lift up our first responders. We pray that you'd continue to protect them, especially our resource officers. We pray for wisdom and blessing upon them, their families, and discernment in doing their job, Lord. Father, you are so good, you are so faithful, and so we pray that you'd continue to guide and bless us and shower us with your grace and that you would draw so many in these days in which we live to yourself. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. We so appreciate you being here and appreciate that invocation. Go ahead and call the meeting to order if you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda. You have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Great, thank you. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
No, sir. No.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move on to item two, which is our consent agenda. At this time, I will ask for any citizen comment, either in person or online, with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Is there any citizen comment? Troy, any comment online?
I'm sure I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you.
No online comment.
Thanks, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Sheriff, please, the board, I do have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through AH of the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So with that, we'll move on to item three, our regular agenda, and the first item under item three is item three A, 2025-2026 Public Contract for Services to Share Costs for the School Resource Officer Program. Derek Costellano, Commander from the Sheriff's Office, presenting for staff, I believe. Great, welcome.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I believe we're going to start off with a short video.
That went under.
I know how I would approach this. How do you guys, how do you guys approach this?
Really impressive to see. Every time you walk in classroom, the entire classroom lights up.
Nineteen, that's easy. Oh, I get a star. Nice.
The kids are coming up to you, they're showing you their footwear selection of the day.
Four score.
And then you talk to them and they talk to you like friends.
It's pretty obvious that you have a great relationship with the kids here.
That's the goal. I think, I think that's the ultimate goal.
Be yourself and be there for the kids.
Show up as yourself.
Exactly.
Do you want this pressure? Are you sure? Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. Stop reading my mind. Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
Playing rock, paper, scissors with the kids or doing football.
Bo Nix ain't got nothing on me.
You allow the kids to be comfortable with you, and then when they're comfortable, they're allowed to tell you things that they normally wouldn't. Exactly.
That relationship is critically important. They truly make a difference in these kids' lives. They truly make a difference in the safety of each campus. Our SROs are handpicked by the Sheriff's Office and the school district just to ensure that we've got a good fit. Bottom line is that SRO is there to save lives. God forbid that they're needed in that role.
Has there been a particular moment that really stands out to you?
A hard time in my life was when we had the incident at STEM School. I was actually over at Valor when that happened.
So much of what we're doing today with school resource officers is upon reflection of what occurred and trying to invest so that a tragedy like that doesn't happen again.
You have that one moment, that one thing that occurs.
The main one that really stands out is one of our students was feeling suicidal. She went up to the rock up here in Council Rock and was texting a friend that she was going to jump off.
A few years ago, I had a student that was in crisis. She was, she was self-harming.
There's been many times that I've talked to kids and just really just let them know that I'm there for them, no matter what it is.
But ever since then, she hangs out with me all the time.
She's actually doing really well.
That's fantastic.
She graduated and everything's going great.
That gives me goosebumps because you'll never know all of the lives that you have impacted by your presence in this building.
Not in this house, Daniel.
This is the best police officer ever.
No matter how upset your parents get at you, trust me, I know this, your parents will still love and respect you.
On behalf of the county, I just want to thank you so much.
It's not just us that are behind you guys. It's all 400,000 people that live here.
Oh, boy. Thank you, guys. That's great, guys.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Derek Costellano, and I serve as the commander of the School Resource Officer Unit with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I'm here to respectfully request your approval of the 2026 Resource Officer, School Resource Officer Budget. Our team currently supports 57 schools across the county with 37 sworn staff. This includes three sergeants, two corporals, and also one brand-new service dog. In 2024 alone, our SROs handled 4,623 calls for service. This also includes 2,583 safe-to-tell tips. The proposed budget maintains critical staffing levels and supports essential training, equipment, and community engagement programs such as youth academies and bicycle safety education. The Douglas County School District's mission is to provide an educational foundation that allows for each student to reach his or own individual potential. Our SROs help advance that mission by fostering safe, supportive learning environments where staff, students and staff can focus on growth without fear of violence or disruption. We are proud of the strong partnership that we, we have between the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and the Douglas County School District and our private partners and our charter partners. Together, we have built a collaborative approach that enhances school safety, strengthens our border, our broad, excuse me, strengthens our broader community. Our work is also grounded in the mission of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, partnering with the community in our wavering commitment to safeguard life, rights, and properties while enforcing the law fairly. On campus, this translates to building trust with students, preventing crime through early intervention, and responding to incidents with professionalism and care. Our SROs serve not just as law enforcement officers but as mentors and advocates. Their presence enhances safety, reduces emergency response time, builds positive relationships, and strengthens, strengthens the overall school climate. Thank you for your continued support. Your approval of this budget directly contributes to safer schools, stronger communities, and better outcomes for our students, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, Commander, thank you for that. I don't know if I have any questions, my colleagues might, but I just want to stop for a moment and really say thank you to you and all of the SROs that are here, every member of the Sheriff's Office that has participated in this program, and, you know, it's so meaningful. Seven years in as a Commissioner, I remember being five months in and getting that call about the STEM shooting and being rushed down with the sheriff to the AMC to give that press conference to the entire nation about what had happened when truly none of us quite knew where we were at and what the future would look like. And at that time, Board of County Commissioners contributed $13 million to the Board of Education to work on three pillars. It was physical school security, mental health, and SROs. And, you know, it's interesting to me, I'm so honored to be serving with a former state Senator, Kevin Van Winkle, and during that time, Commissioner Van Winkle was really chairing and working on, I think you were, I'm not sure what role you were doing in that interim school safety committee, but you were there for a long time, working very hard on that. And I remember testifying in front of you and your colleagues, and politicians from Denver wanted to defund the police and said, "The police are not important. We need to defund. They're not doing the right thing in our schools." And it was shocking to me to see the level of inaction at the state level. You know, at that point, we said, "Listen, we are in Douglas County going to fund the police, not defund the police," and I'm so thankful we did because it's today, it really marks the good news that we'll never hear about, just like I said in that video, the number of kids that have not killed themselves or harmed other people because of the relationships that you and your team have built, it can't be overstated. Mental health support is so important, and we invested there. Having that technology in the building's so important, but that human element cannot be replaced, and what each of you provides, and each of you that aren't here, provides within your schools, that is that greatest level of security, that relationship. We weren't arresting our way out of school security issues. You were building your, building relationships so that tragedy did not occur. And I'm so thankful that Douglas County truly has the highest number of school resource officers in the state, and I know that, that my colleagues and I want to continue to build on that and continue to support the great work of the Sheriff's Office. So it's a moving day. I'm very compelled. Colleagues?
Yeah, I just would echo those sentiments and thank you. No kid should ever be in fear going to school, and no parent should ever feel that sick, worrying fill in their stomach when they drop their kids off at school. And in Douglas County, I think our families feel safe, our kids feel safe, and the biggest part of that, in my mind, is knowing that there's an SRO there on campus every day. And for me and my family, I couldn't be more proud of the work that the board, previous to me joining, has done. I was, my biggest topic, our biggest push at the State Capitol when I was there, was school safety, and being able to come here now and be on the front lines and support you in any way we can. You did ask if we had any questions, and I guess my one question to you would be, is there anything else we can do to support you and your team? Do you have what you need to do your job?
Yes, sir. We have been very fortunate that we have a good partnership with our Board of County Commissioners, the support of Sheriff Weekly. You know, I want to speak, I don't want to speak too prematurely, but if we do have more needs, we'll be happy for the support in the future, and, and so far, we're good. We got our new service dog who's getting acclimated, and we're happy to have him on board, so I appreciate the support.
Very good, and I do know, I, when I first joined the County Commissioners, I was talking to some of the SROs in the Hans Ranch substation, and they expressed the desire to work out either before or after their shift, and it was just a small little ask, and the County Commissioners, thanks to my colleagues, stepped up and improved that gym for the whole Hans Ranch substation, but especially for the SROs that are there before and after their shift in that locker room. So anything like that we can do, do not hesitate to ask. I want to be 100% supportive of you and your work because I truly heroes every day, and I know every SRO isn't going to be called out every day as a hero, and that is large part as to what Commissioner Layden said, which is, there's no news in this case is often good news, and it's often thanks to the SROs. And so I just say, God bless you and keep up the good work and anything we can ever do for you. Don't hesitate to ask. You have at least, you have a couple dads here on the dais, and we know truly how important school safety is and a safe learning environment for our children.
Thanks, sir.
Well said, Commissioner, and you should take credit for that increased support for SROs at the, at the substation. You came in, wanted to get that done, and got it done immediately, so great, great work on that level. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you, Chair. You know, I actually don't have any questions, but since my colleagues have taken the opportunity, I'll make a few comments. As far as the thanking us for providing the resources for the team, for me, that's a, don't worry about it. I appreciate you guys being out there. My kids are grown now. As a matter of fact, my daughter's a law enforcement officer herself, and I remember the day that, you know, she talked about how, and I don't even think she was in middle school yet, how, you know, the anxiety she does feel going to school, knowing, knowing how mass shootings happen, and the, just knowing that the team is out there, ready, you know. I think there was a time, at least at Greeley Central High School, when school security was Vice Principal La Pettit walking around with a baseball bat. And if that environment has changed, it's good to know that we do have the members of the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, as well as our municipal police forces, in our schools to provide that safety and security for the children itself, and hopefully the peace of mind of, as my colleagues said, the parents, that three of which are up here right now. You heard me say it in the video, listen, guys, you guys have great support. I mean, I can't think of any one element of our county governance that has the support that the SRO program does. You know, it's, well, it's a testament to your conduct, to your professionalism, to the leadership of the SRO program. I'm glad you're out there. Keep at it. We are counting on you.
Thanks, sir.
Very well said, Commissioner. So I do have an ask, and this is me just maybe being around for a little bit, but I love this idea of not resting on our laurels and continuing to elevate your program. And, you know, we've been studying those NASRO statistics for a long time and having those conversations with the superintendent, and, and right now, there's a lot of alignment around ensuring that those police force dogs are, are added in number and that we can increase those. And I'll just speak for myself in saying that is a huge request, is that you come back and request of us, if this pilot works, to add more. And again, we know from the evidence that it's not just about having a fuzzy, cute animal at the school. You know, the statistics show that kids are 10 times more likely to engage with an SRO when there is a dog involved that's, that's trained and that can participate in that public safety engagement. So I love that, and if that helps you build relationships, whatever we can do to provide the additional supports, if it's vets and shots and boarding and whatever that needs to look like, please come back next year because we want to hear how the program's going and want to add to that number if it's possible to do that.
Will do, sir.
Yeah, thank you. With that, let me open it up to any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, Troy, not seeing any, oh, yes, sir.
My name's Gary Wood. I live in Prairie Park. I'm sitting there trying to figure out how to tie camping into this, but I couldn't. However, in light of the recent activity in the Middle East, I'd like the Commissioners to consider figuring out a way to increase, to harden the SROs as there are sleeper cells in this country, and our children deserve not to be soft targets. Would you please consider that? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional citizen comment? Any other citizen comment in the room? Okay, seeing none, Troy, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I do have one online person, Mr. Whitten, waiting for permission to unmute him.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Whitten, you're, you're live. Go ahead.
I thank you, sirs. My name is Len Whitten, W-H-I-T-T-E-N. You're approving $4 million for school resource officers. I understand that this is necessary, and I understand it's extremely well done. I have no objection to that. What I am confused about, though, is why are we providing $400,000 of that to four private schools? One of those, the Armada Academy, charges somewhere around $10,000 a year, if I'm correct, and their name means warriors of God. It does seem like they should be able to protect their selves, but seriously, I am kind of confused about why we are funding private schools. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Troy, any additional citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no additional comment.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close citizen comment, bringing it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion, and maybe have the Commander answer anything that he heard in citizen comment. For the last individual that commented, I'll be happy to share our thinking around why we fund all schools in Douglas County. It's because we have a legal statutory charge over the health, safety, and welfare of 400,000 people, including every child in this county. That is not confined to the public schools. That is every child in every school. So that is the rationale from our perspective as to why we make sure that all kids in our community are protected. Commander, anything else on, on what you heard?
Nothing other than we value our partnership with all schools, and we want to ensure that every, every student has the opportunity to be safe in school, no matter what type of school that they attend. So our mission is the same, whether it's a public school, charter school, or private school, we will still deliver the same product of excellence that we've always brought in before.
That's great. Thank you, sir. From the board, yeah?
And I, I do appreciate those comments because if a child is going to school in Douglas, in Douglas County, they should feel safe, and they have that right to safety. And if the fire alarm goes off at school A or school B, the fire department's going to respond likewise. So I think it's important that we keep all kids safe in Douglas County and all schools safe, and it is a partnership. It's not just a handout.
That's exactly right. Commissioner Teal?
May I ask permission? I see the undersheriff is present. May I ask permission to ask him a few questions?
Please. Undersheriff, would you be willing to answer a few questions for us?
Hello, Board? Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm here at your pleasure.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Not for much longer, sir, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. I've already asked members of your staff if we can apply handcuffs and just change your desk. For some reason, they said no. I don't understand why. Undersheriff, in the event that there is a crime that occurs at a private school in Douglas County, would the Douglas County Sheriff's Department respond?
Absolutely. We don't care where that would, a crime, as long as it's in our jurisdiction. For instance, unincorporated Douglas County, we would respond to that. Yes, sir.
In the event of a crime at a, at a, at a private school, would that perhaps was no longer in, occurring, but an investigation would otherwise be called for, would the Douglas County Sheriff's Department conduct such an investigation into that crime?
Is, if that was in our jurisdiction, absolutely.
In the event of a, a parent of a student at a private school, whether at the school or away from the school, resided in the jurisdiction of the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, would that parent of a student of a private school be able to turn to the would that parent of a student of a private school be able to turn to the Douglas County Sheriff's Department for reporting the crime?
Of course, yes.
In the event, teacher who was a victim of a crime that, at the time it happened, was, occurred in the jurisdiction of the Douglas County Sheriff's Department, would that teacher be able to report that crime to a Douglas County, to the Douglas County Sheriff's Department?
Absolutely, yes.
I think that answers my questions, thank you, undersheriff. Thank you, Chair.
If I may, could I add just a couple comments?
Please.
Okay, thank you. You know, speaking of school resource officer program, you all have been incredibly accurate and thoughtful about our program. It is the largest in the state, and I will tell you that I do the great majority of the final interviews for deputy sheriffs that go to work for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and on every occasion, when I'm walking them from my office to their next stop to be onboarded, if you will, I talk about the SRO program and how we have the largest program in the state, we're very proud of that, and in this county, this county likes cops in schools. So do we, I'm just telling you. And you're exactly right, Commissioner Layden, some other jurisdictions can't decide what they want. And they have defunded the police, and they've gone in and out as far as having SROs, not in this county. So we very much appreciate your commitment to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and the men and women that do this job. My connection with school shootings goes back to 1999, and I was a nine-month lieutenant with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, and I was the incident commander for the Columbine High School shootings. And I've been involved in numerous high, shootings in schools over a tenure in different, varying capacities and different agencies I've been in. So, I love our commitment here, and I appreciate the continued support and strong support of the Douglas, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, so I appreciate it very much, I just wanted to add that comment, thank you.
Well, before you go too far, undersheriff, I'm, I'm certain that the sheriff will afford us an opportunity to, to thank you in a more profound way, but before you go, just wanted to extend our gratitude on behalf of the county for your remarkable career and your commitment to public safety in Douglas County.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and it is my tremendous honor to move to approve the 2025-2026 Public Contract for Service to Share Costs for the School Resource Officer Program.
I still say we need to chain the undersheriff to his desk and not allow him to retire. However, I will second the motion.
Great, so we have a first and second on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. If you're a member of the school resource officer team, if you could stand up and let I believe that we, yeah, we have been asked to take a photo, and again, if you're a member of that team, if you'll join us up, up at the front, we'll take a brief photo.
Who's taking care of the kids now? Yeah, hopefully they're parents, right? All right, you get to get in, yeah. I don't know, actually, you know, you're one of the few guys that almost makes them look smaller. There you go. Come on, while this show business, forget it. There you go. There you go. Thanks, fellas, very much appreciated. Yeah, it's good. Absolutely. But no, I do want to try to be honest with you. Yeah. Absolutely. Good job. Keep up the good work. Oh, yeah. That's good. To see that, to see the century, but. He's like a cat. There's a guy. Of course.
Well, that is really good stuff, very encouraging. So with that, we're going to move on to our next item under our regular agenda, which is item 3B, our 2025 Douglas County Fire Operating Plan. Mike Alexander, Director, presenting for staff. Hi, Mike.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Alexander, Director, Douglas County Emergency Management. Tough to follow up, Guster, there, but I will try, I will do my best. Today, I'm presenting before you for your signatures, your review and signatures, the Fire Operating Plan. This is a five-year renewal between Douglas County, the United States Forest Service, and the Colorado State Division of Fire Prevention and Control. The purpose of the Fire Operating Plan is to set forth standard operating procedures and protocols, roles and responsibilities, to implement cooperative wildfire protection and cooperation on all lands within Douglas County. Wildfire management is certainly something that we take incredibly seriously here in Douglas County, as we do in all forms of public safety. I, I would add that this, this particular document is built on the foundation of partnerships, and that's really what we're about here in Douglas County, is leveraging all that we, all the tools and capabilities we have before us to ultimately provide public safety to our citizens. And in, in, in the scope of wildland fire management, we have a hard, heavy, fast approach to wildfire suppression. Wildfires are the number one natural hazard facing the citizens of Douglas County. Wildfires prevent a clear and present danger to lives and property, natural resources, cultural values, watersheds, and many others. So, we work very diligently at being prepared for that risk. We take proactive approaches, as you all are significant supportive, supporters of our mitigation programs, our prevention programs, our Code Red outreach, as well as our response and recovery. And today, we're talking mostly about the response phase of fire management. Three of the core pillars here in Douglas County for wildfire management are early detection of wildfires, leveraging new and emerging technologies like AI fire detection cameras, aggressive initial attack with our very unique helicopter heli-tac program here in Douglas County, so that we can respond quickly to those fires and put them out while they're small, before it's too late and they're too large for us to have any real impact. We also rely on mutual aid coordination, so relying on our partners from the fire departments throughout Douglas County and beyond, the United States Forest Service as our federal partners, and the Division of Fire Prevention and Control, and all of their many assets as our state partners. So, that is the purpose of this document, just to outline how we do that work together on paper, and so that when we go out on the ground, we know what we're doing and who's doing it. But, as opposed to me just standing up here and boring you with all of that, what I would rather do is highlight for you a fantastic video that the county public relations and communication division helped us put together, based on our helicopter, our wildland fire response protocols, and our partnerships with those technology firms, utility companies, and other divisions from the county. This video production was in fact done so well that it's going to be shown at, in Washington, DC, this Thursday at a congressional hearing on a natural resources subcommittee, supporting emerging technologies and preventing fires. And Douglas County is being recognized as a national example of how to get that work done, thanks to the support from you all in the Board of County Commissioners, as well as Sheriff Darren Weekly. So, without further ado, I would like to highlight this video for you.
Colorado and California are ground zero. The brightest, hottest red zones in the nation are right here.
We have shown that we are not waiting for natural disasters. We're building a wildfire response team that uses every tool available to protect lives in our community.
Fighting wildfires in Douglas County means being tip of the spear.
They're getting a full 360-degree picture of the landscape.
Whether it's artificial intelligence or having the only dedicated heli-tac team and helicopter of any county in the state of Colorado, we're fighting wildfires hard, heavy, and fast.
This was never more clear than in the case of the Bear Creek Fire.
The U.S. Forest Service responded to a wildfire in Douglas County today.
Our systems scan the horizon every few seconds, automatically detect the first signs of smoke, and deliver precise coordinates.
Douglas County Heli-tac located the fire about 30 minutes after receiving that Pano AI alert.
The fire was fully contained at just three acres.
Just this last year, we put out 34 wildfires, nine of which were out of the county. We get reimbursed for all of those out-of-county fires, but we are really asking our metro-area partners, other counties throughout the Denver metro area, to partner with Douglas County to prevent this potential danger, because wildfires know no boundaries.
More people are in harm's way than ever before. In Douglas County, 66% are living within the wildland urban fire interface.
The potential loss is absolutely staggering.
We can do anything from cutting fire line to grading a road, knocking down trees, it's very rewarding.
We're blessed to live in such an amazing county that takes wildland firefighting so seriously.
Douglas County is doing everything it can to make sure we're prepared, but we're asking you to sign up for Code Red and make sure you're mitigating densely wooded areas around your property. We're ready for wildfires, are you?
And just to build on the excellent points made in that video, I would add that so far in 2025, our operation has responded to five wildfires within Douglas County, none of which grew larger than three acres. Going back to the partnerships as well, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that several of the SRO deputies sitting in the back of the room are also members of our Douglas County Sheriff's Office Wildland Fire Hand Crew. So they do dual duty, protecting our kids, and then help us protect everyone in the form of wildfires and, and supporting the emergency services unit. So, another great example of partnerships, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, well, I mean, before you give us too much credit, I want to give you a ton of credit, Mike. I mean, you have been such a phenomenal director of emergency management, and again, being tip of the spear, making sure that we're not just the only county in the state with a heli-tac team, but leveraging AI in a way that puts out fires that nobody will ever hear about. I always quote your statistic, which is one square mile in Douglas County represents $150 million in property values. This year, we are Vice Chair of Metro Area County Commissioners, and you and I have presented to that group around what it takes to face the number one threat facing all of our counties. And we just lived through the Marshall Fire. We made an offer to the metro area counties of about 350,000 each to participate with us, so that we can increase the personnel that can address these fires hard, heavy, and fast. And right now, we're still waiting, and I don't know if that's a leadership issue in the metro area, but each of these counties has nearly a billion-dollar budget. So trying to find 350,000 shouldn't be too hard, but thrilled that, that we're doing that, and like we've said, you're putting out fires in their jurisdictions, and we're getting reimbursed for that. Let me open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Well, I also want to say thank you for all your work. As we, as you mentioned, and it actually is eye-opening, once again, to find out there's been five unique fires in Douglas County that were put out quickly, put out while the fire was small, and before it could become completely uncontained. Any one of those fires could grow out of control, and it could be a terrible situation that we've seen before here in Douglas County in our past, and even across the state of Colorado. So, my sincere thanks to you for the work that's being done, and as Commissioner Layden kind of hinted at, other counties are, they're worried about wildfires, but they're unsure how to respond. In Douglas County, we are not unsure how to respond, we are being proactive and being the tip of the spear for the whole front range.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner, and I, I'm honored to have been appointed by the Governor of the State Forest Health Commission, and it is remarkable to me that, you know, we had all of these recommendations very similar to this, very action-oriented, and the state, because they have a $1.3 billion budget shortfall, was not able to move forward on any of it. So it's, it's a challenging time, but we are in a county that has no debt, has a balanced budget, healthy reserves, and very similar to the SRO program, I know we are so committed to public safety, and that being the number one priority for our citizens. All these other choices and priorities around budget don't matter a lot if your home and your family, your pets, your animals are at risk because of a wildfire. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity to fund this. Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. I have no questions for Mike, good job, Mike, this is a good plan, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Gary Wood, Prairie Park, what a program. You guys have knocked it out of the park with the ability to fight the fires. I would simply point out to you that the best fire that you can fight is the one that you prevent. Please do not initiate any kind of camping on Douglas County open spaces, thereby putting them at risk of fire. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional citizen comment? Troy, any citizen comment online?
Commissioner, I. Thank you, Commissioner Layden, I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Knowing the importance of fire response, as Enes was pointed out, fire prevention in this area, a very fire-prone area of our country, if it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve the 2025 Douglas County Fire Operating Plan.
I second that motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Thanks again for being here. Huge thanks again to all the SROs that are doing double duty on wildfire prevention, too. With that, we'll move on to item 3 in our regular agenda, which is item 3C, 6793 Scott Avenue Site Improvement Plan Fee Waiver Request for the estimated amount of $374,075. Project File SP 2023-068. Mike Basica, Principal Planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. Mike Basica, representing Planning Services, and the request before you is the 6793 Scott Avenue Fee Waiver Request for an Associated Workforce Housing Multi-Family Site Improvement Plan, project number SP 2023-068, and the applicant does have representatives here this Ulysses Development Group has submitted a site improvement plan that is currently under review for development of a workforce housing multi-family apartment complex. The applicant is requesting approval of a waiver of all planning and engineering review fees, right-of-way permit fees, and building permit fees for a total, total fee waiver request of $374,075 as listed on this slide. And fee waivers are granted at the Board's discretion. Just a quick reminder of where the site is, it's, the project area is highlighted in yellow, it's in the northeast area of Douglas County, and at the northwest corner of the intersection of Scott Avenue and State Highway 83. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, I can take questions at this time, otherwise, the applicant is here to have a, make a brief statement and take any questions you guys might have.
Great, thank you, Mike. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none, we'll invite the applicant to come up, if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Ahmed Abdulhamid, Ulysses Development Group in Denver.
With that, we'll move on to Item 3 in our regular agenda, which is Item 3C, 6793 Scott Avenue Site Improvement Plan Fee Waiver Request for the estimated amount of $374,075. Project File SP 2023-068. Mike Basica, Principal Planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. Mike Basica, representing Planning Services, and the request before you is the 6793 Scott Avenue Fee Waiver Request for an Associated Workforce Housing Multi-Family Site Improvement Plan, Project Number SP 2023-068, and the applicant does have representatives here this Ulysses Development Group has submitted a site improvement plan that is currently under review for development of a workforce housing multi-family apartment complex. The applicant is requesting approval of a waiver of all planning and engineering review fees, right-of-way permit fees, and building permit fees for a total fee waiver request of $374,075 as listed on this slide, and fee waivers are granted at the board's discretion. Just a quick reminder of where the site is. It's the project area is highlighted in yellow. It's in the northeast area of Douglas County and at the northwest corner of the intersection of Scott Avenue and State Highway 83. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here. I can take questions at this time, otherwise the applicant is here to have a, make a brief statement and take any questions you guys might have.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none, we'll invite the applicant to come up if you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Ahmed Updah Hamid, Ulysses Development Group in Denver. Thank you, Mike, for the introduction, all the work on this matter. Commissioners, thank you for your time. It's great to be in front of you all again. As Mike mentioned, we are requesting a waiver of our impact fees for our 6793 Scott Avenue project. The impact fee waiver will assist with the following items: improve the financial feasibility of the development, assist with offsetting the cost to develop our onsite three-acre public park, and will act as a catalyst in our ability to apply for funding through the state, as this will meet the local match criteria the state prefers to see with applications. We're continuing to move through our planning process and anticipate wrapping everything up in early 2026. So thanks again for your time, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
You know, so we heard from staff that this will help add to the inventory of workforce housing. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so with our request of the $374,000, that helps improve our financial feasibility as we're working through our financing right now to eventually develop 204 units of workforce housing at this property.
Okay, and so is it committed to be workforce housing? Is it coming in at a certain AMI?
Yes. It all, yes, correct. Correct. So that has not changed. It will be an average of no greater than 60% AMI for all units.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
With that, and if there are no further board questions, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. No online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move to approve 6793 Scott Avenue Site Improvement Plan Fee Waiver Requested for the estimated amount of $374,075. Project File SP 2023-068.
I do think it's, I've always been critical in the past when I see any other jurisdiction getting behind a so-called workforce housing project and then still charging six, seven figures in fees. So indeed, we have to ask ourselves, is this something we believe in? Is this a project that we think is going to be for the benefit of the people of Douglas County? And if the answer is yes, then I find myself with no other thing to do than second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. We have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Thank you for the presentation. I do think that this is significant from a public interest standpoint and better serves our community by increasing that inventory for workforce housing. So for us to be a partner in that financially and help elevate your work, I'm pleased to be supportive. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. With that, we're going to move on to the next item in the regular agenda, which is Item 3D, Grant Agreement for Older Adult Transportation Services Between Douglas County and Castle Rock Senior Activity Center in the Amount of $189,000. Jennifer D'Ambrogio, Community Programs Coordinator, presenting for staff.
Chair, would you like me to present the next three items together or separately?
Actually, if you could go ahead and present all three together, since they're related to one another, I think that's perfectly fine. And I'm going to just state for the record, that is Items 3D, 3E, and 3F. Just mentioned 3D. 3E is a grant agreement for older adult home-delivered meals between Douglas County and Nourish Meals on Wheels in the amount of $100,000, and Item 3F is a grant agreement for older adult transportation services between Douglas County and Aging Resources of Douglas County in the amount of $131,000.
Jennifer D'Ambrogio, Community Services, representing staff. As part of the Older Adult Initiative, the Board of County Commissioners allotted $1.5 million in accrued interest earned on Local American Rescue Plan Act funds to be used for a competitive grant program to support innovative and collaborative projects that assist Douglas County residents age 60 and older. Castle Rock Senior Activity Center submitted a grant application proposing to increase the number of trips it provides to older adults in Douglas County. The proposal was reviewed and recommended for funding by the Older Executive Committee. On May 19th, the BCC approved the funding recommendations. Nourish Meals on Wheels also applied to expand its service area in Douglas County. Aging Resource of Douglas County applied also to increase the provided number of trips. Castle Rock Senior Activity Center applied to increase its trips by 5,109 trips. Door-to-door transportation services provide access to vital resources, recreation, medical care, and groceries, and contribute to a resident's overall quality of life. Nourish Meals on Wheels applied to provide 100 clients three hot meals each week, Monday through Friday, for a total of 10,000 meals. The budget included $32,501 in one-time cost to support expansion and $67,500 to prepare and deliver meals. Aging Resources of Douglas County proposed to add an additional 3,541 one-way trips, and this transportation services provide vital access to resources, recreation, medical care, and groceries. Staff requests approval of the grant agreement between Douglas County and Castle Rock Senior Activity Center for older adult transportation services in the amount of $189,000. Staff also requests approval of the grant agreement between Douglas County and Nourish Meals on Wheels to provide meal delivery in the amount of $100,000. Staff requests approval of the grant agreement between Douglas County and Aging Resources of Douglas County for older adult transportation services in the amount of $131,000. Thank you, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much for that. Any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay. I'm not seeing any questions, so with that, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to these three items?
Commissioner Layden, I do have online comment.
Okay.
I have sent a request for unmuting for Debbie Haney. Debbie?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just want to thank you for all that you do for our older adults. As I've told you in the past, I've been with the Senior Center for over 15 years. When I started, we were doing 450 rides a month. Last month, we did 11,000, I mean, 1,163 rides. This money is going to go a long way, and we greatly appreciate your support of all that you do for older adults in our community.
Thank you so much, Ms. Haney. We appreciate that. Any additional citizen comment?
I have no additional online comment, sir.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Well, colleagues, thank you very much for considering these three grant agreement approvals today. Obviously, these are three items that came from our Older Adults Initiative, which I very much appreciate the support I've received from the two of you to pursue that and to try to answer that question of, are we doing enough for our older adults here in the community, many of which, whom have lived here for a generation or more, you know, made the decision 30, 40, 50 years ago to move here to Douglas County in many instances and make this the place that, yes, they pursue their careers, but also that they raise their families. And I appreciate you hearing my commitment that we should make sure that this isn't just a good place to raise a family, but this is the ideal place to live once your work-life is done and once your life raising children is also behind you. I believe that these three projects do help us keep that commitment. When this was first considered to be brought before us for approval today, actually, our staff had said, well, we've already talked about this several times, you know, Kevin, even since you've been here on the board, this has been an item of discussion that we've moved forward. And of course, Abe, you, I'm sure, recall when we allocated this and this year's budget last fall. So despite having passed several passes with the board for the last six months, I asked it to be put on the regular agenda. I do think that there are too many times that our society forgets about our older adults among us. We focus on, often, as our other discussions we've had today, of what are we doing to make this a place where you can raise your kids? That's great, but I really felt it important that we bring this to the regular agenda. Do have an opportunity for this presentation. Jennifer, I'm so sorry, you got roped into public speaking once again. However, I thought it was important, and with that, all that said, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve a grant agreement for older adult transportation services between Douglas County and Castle Rock Senior Activity Center in the amount of $189,000.
I second that motion and just big kudos to you, Commissioner Teal, Commissioner Layden, for your work making this happen. The vision from you, Commissioner Teal, is second to none, and just being able to get it into the budget-making party. We had a wonderful town hall with the seniors of Douglas County a couple, just, I think it was about two weeks ago, and one of the big things that probably, that kept coming up is the transportation services, and this line in particularly speaks directly to that. So I'm proud to see this, I'm proud to second the motion.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioners. Well, George, you have not forgotten the seniors in Douglas County, and, you know, as much as I have enjoyed, you know, watching some of my initiatives move forward, I'm always very cognizant of the fact that I do not do that alone and cannot. Without at least one or two additional votes, nothing moves forward, and you have really taken on the Older Adults Initiative and met with so many seniors in our community. You have burned out your shoes that are always very well-shined, connecting with seniors legitimately, and you're to be commended for that. So it's really pretty fun for me to see this move forward to an actionable opportunity for us, and it's a both-and, which is one of my favorites. My impression of your conclusion with the Older Adults Initiative and the tour is transportation, 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 social, emotional, meals. I'm seeing a lot of this taken care of here. Can't forget about the LINK program, which you've also been instrumental in, and I think this, in addition to expanding LINK to Highlands Ranch and hopefully beyond those boundaries, can increase those transportation opportunities for older adults as well. So I'm very much in favor, and again, congratulations on bringing this forward.
Thank you for the compliment of my shoes.
I will get mine to shine at some point, I promise. I promise. Okay, great. So I believe we do have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Commissioner, would you like to do the next two motions?
With pleasure. If it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve a grant agreement for older adult home-delivered meals between Douglas County and Nourish Meals on Wheels in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously as well.
I have a motion to approve a grant agreement for older adult transportation services between Douglas County and Aging Resources of Douglas County in the amount of $131,000.
I second that motion, and also just want to say, since now we've, we'll have passed three of these, just Douglas County really is special. It's a great place to live, work, raise a family, and also to retire, and we are here to serve the people, not the other way around, and this is a great moment of service from the Board of County Commissioners in the County of Douglas and all the hard people at work, day in and day out, providing these services. Very proud of Douglas County today.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we've got a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries unanimously as well. So with that, we are through our regular agenda. We are a little bit past due for our public hearing items, but I do want to leave some time for citizen comment. So we'll move into Item 4, which is citizen comment organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda, which you have already had an opportunity to comment on. Now is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you'll state your name and where you reside prior to making any comments, you will have up to three minutes. Any disruptive behavior, such as impeding officials, refusing to leave when asked, or attempting to disrupt the meeting, may result in criminal charges. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. With that, is there any citizen comment? Any citizen comment in the room? Okay. Yes, sir.
Gary Wood, Perry Park, again, let me congratulate you on the firefighting initiatives that you've taken. Those are deeply appreciated and engendered confidence in our communities. It's a lot of paperwork, gentlemen, and it is representative of the number of petitions and comments that we were able to put together in our community over a matter of several days, the community being primarily Greater Larkspur residents, but we had folks come and sign our petitions from all over Douglas County. There are 1,524 petitions signed in here. That's approximately half of the response you got from your survey, and the rest of this constitutes commentaries from your constituents and your voters. I wish I had time to read all of them to you, but I've selected a couple. I promise you, they're random, they're not inflammatory. This proposal threatens the safety of our wildlife, ranches, families, and drastically increases fire risk not only for our property but thousands of wildlife around it. We are absolutely against this proposal. I've been around a long time and watched many a wildfire come and go and have evacuated several times. Camping in Sandstone is a disaster waiting to happen. Why can't we just enjoy the open space without the trash destruction that will come in with camping? Our world is so punished right now by rising prices. What we don't need for insurance companies is to jack up the prices because of increased fire danger that this will bring. Houses close to that site might have their insurance canceled altogether. Whose whim is this, anyway? I stand before you today with a request. Your citizens, your voters, are asking you to adopt a resolution banning camping on not just Sandstone but rather Douglas County open spaces, given the risk that it presents. We don't want to use the helicopter. We don't want to see firefighters at Sandstone. We want to have that risk removed. Will you please create indoors and sign and pass a resolution against camping on Douglas County open spaces? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any additional citizen comment? Any citizen comment online, Troy?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any commissioner I have a few comments on that, and, you know, I think we have certainly heard from you, sir, many times, and certainly appreciate you being here and any citizen that wishes to comment. What I candidly struggle with is you hearing the presentation around our county being the only county in the state that has a dedicated heli-tac team, and I appreciate the kudos. I think it is something that we do as a community with citizens. It's with taxpayer dollars that we are fighting to make sure that our county is safe. I think we have to be very careful that I think we have to be very careful that we're not telling fellow citizens that they are, they can't be responsible with fire. You know, I think obviously, one of the greatest potential risks is any house located in the WU, in the wildland urban interface. So just having a home where your home, sir, is situated, is a massive potential threat to wildfire throughout our community. So we recognize that, but I don't think we would ever tell you that you can't be responsible with fire. So my commitment to you as just one commissioner and to the entire community of Larkspur, which we love and appreciate, I've known your mayor for the better part of 20 years, is we will not do anything that puts your community at greater risk for fire danger, and anything we do must be done responsibly. So I appreciate your advocacy and just want to ensure that we're being fair to all citizens. We did hear from a majority, based upon that survey, that there is a medium or high interest in exploring what that looks like to be able to recreate within our community. Open spaces purchased through the tax dollars of our citizens, all citizens. So I know, for me at least, it has been a priority to make sure that all citizens can use that open space. It's not just set aside and then locked away so that citizens can't have access. I think we share that value in common, so I look forward to the continued discussion. Any additional comments? Okay. Any other business that the board would like to bring forward at this time? Not seeing any. We are at a posted meeting, so you can bring forward any business. I see you maybe thinking of something.
I do believe, Mr. Chairman, it is election day and polls are open until 7:00 PM, so I encourage residents paying attention to vote.
I would echo that sentiment. Please return your ballots, get out and vote. Commissioner Teal, anything on that?
Just to jump on, it's too late to mail it. If you intend to vote, get your ballot to a drop box or an in-person voting station, and that information can be found on your web browser at douglasvotes dot, is it douglasvotes.com? Or douglasvotes.us? Dot com. Douglasvotes.com.
Thank you, Commissioner. And then turning to our county manager, there is a county manager report included in the packet. Anything from the county manager? Okay, thank you. So with that, the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, at 1:30 PM. We'll adjourn for about five minutes and then reset for our next meeting.